And nobody's turning in.
All right, it's a good evening, everyone. It's six oh one. I'd like to begin this study session of our Bananas Schools Track one sixteen. A roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Here.
Member Amarabu?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Langendorf here, member Baxley?
Here.
President Palowski?
Here. There are some modifications to tonight's agenda. Study topic eight dot two is being postponed until June seventeenth, as is in the study topic eight point three, we're going to be moving discussion of the sixth grade center also to June seventeenth. Are there any other modifications or corrections for tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. It is now time for citizen statements. If anybody wishes to make a statement before, a formal statement for the board, please fill out a sheet in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson, going once, going twice. No citizen statements this evening. There is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second. We are also moving our track recognition because they are still in practice. So at some point, they are going to arrive probably around six forty-five for their commendation and recognition.
That doesn't require a modification of the agenda. We'll just do that when they show up.
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as modified. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. We'll do the middle school track recognition when they're here, so we'll just go right into our first study topic of the evening, which is the farm to school end of year presentation.
There, leave it there. Okay. Hi, I'm Jenny Flowers, the farm to school coordinator here at the district. I just finished up my second school year. I've put together a presentation to kind of let you know what happened over the school year. The farm to school sign that you see, we had those made out of aluminum composite, and so now each school has that sign, two or more, or two or less in their school gardens. Facilities and grounds put those up for us. I'm very nervous. If you speak French, you will notice that the last rung in that basket says welcome at our garden. So we got stickers and changed that, so now they are all correct. Uh, okay, cool. Um, yeah, facilities and grounds was wonderful. They mounted some on stakes and put them in the gardens. And here's a list of our garden coordinators. It's more than previous years. We have Tori Harvey and Lisa Stiverson at King, and Jody Miller and Cara Moritzie at Lille. They're sharing the position. We have a new garden coordinator at Dr. Preston Williams, that's Tim Tufti. He and Mitzi at U E C S are garden coordinators at schools they don't work at, so we love that they were willing to take on a school that wasn't the one they were at. I want to start out by talking about some fabulous collaborators that we've had this past school year. Some of you might know or have heard of Bhakti Verma. She is a grad student at the U of I, and she worked very closely with Katie Rowland last year, or almost two years ago now, on researching RFPs for schools in other states for their food service provider, because when the law here got changed, that we didn't have to take the lowest bidder, we were able to incorporate other things into our RFP. And so she did a lot of research and helped us with that. And then this year, she wanted to expand her research a little bit, and she worked with us on the wellness committee that Mary Ann is in charge of. And she started this process last year, but she finished it around, or finished part of it around Christmas time and then early spring, where she polled, Katie Rowland kind of resurrected our wellness committee last year, and we wanted to keep that going forward. So she created a document that could poll a lot of key players at each of the schools, and kind of find out where each school was at with regard to their wellness policy and implementation, things like, you know, is unflavored drinking water available throughout the school day? Is physical activity being used as, or the lack of physical activity being used as punishment, like taking away recess, that kind of thing. She created a report for us, and I won't get deep into that. That's something that Mary Ann will probably talk at some point to the principals about. And then we have Dr. Carmen Bluebaugh from the U of I. She takes on a summer project with her undergrads where they brought two raised beds into three of our schools last year. They provided the lumber, the soil, and then the plants, and they did an experiment where they planted zucchini in both beds, and one received a vermicompost treatment and the other didn't. And then as part of that, they have a service component, and so not only did her undergrads do that experiment, the service component was that they maintained the surrounding garden. So all the garden coordinators whose job it is to maintain the gardens had some guaranteed help. Well, the three schools that participated had some guaranteed help for weeding and watering, so that was really useful, and it was a success. So we're working again with her this summer. U H S has joined. It's Lille, U M S, Yankee Ridge, and now the high school, and they're going to do okra this year. Zucchini was great, but by the time the students got back, the zucchini were this big. So okra sets fruit later in the year, so that's going to be really good, because I didn't discover okra as a food until I was in my twenties, and here we're going to have elementary kids that are going to get to experience that early on. So help in the summer, and her undergrads also kind of come up with some curriculum things that if teachers want to do things with their students with her undergrads, that kind of thing is available. She doesn't want to push it, and, you know, we don't ask anybody to absolutely have to participate, but it's something she's developing. And then that brings me to Emily, who is wonderful as far as farm to school is concerned. She's been a huge help with getting local food into the school lunches, and she does a harvest of the month. Got a little wonky there in early spring with the changeover with them, but she's a real joy to work with. And we help find local farms that have product, and then she figures out how to incorporate it into a recipe, and we're able to put local food, most of the year, we were able to put local food in the school lunches at least twice, sometimes more. During the winter, it's very hard to find local food, so there is a distributor out of Chicago that would make deliveries here called The Common Market, and she was able to purchase local beef and local beef patties and local yogurt and some tofu and some other things from them, which allowed her to put burgers and, like, they have a yogurt parfait. I will scoot ahead so you can see those pictures. These kids were too cute, eating their local burgers, and compliments from all of them. They were like, oh, this is better than usual, which is really nice to hear. And then at the middle school and the high school, she's done local yogurt. We're hoping to expand that. So there's a process. We were able to get, it's called L F S money, local food for schools, and that's grant money that we can buy local food with. And that program will go through January twenty twenty-six, and then another grant cycle was going to come into play, but so far that has been canceled. So our ability to buy a large amount of local food might disappear after that unless that particular federal grant is reinstated. But Quest did a great job with the local yogurt in the parfait bar. It was just a big hit. I would go over and just watch kids take big scoops of strawberries and put them on their yogurt, and it's like, great, the more fruit, the better.
And this is where I messed up.
I planted eight leaves right here.
Okay. I learned that you could put video in Canva, and I didn't know that it would autoplay the second the slide comes on.
And this is my final project. I planted eight leaves right here, and then for right here, I planted two layers of onions.
Okay, just to explain a little bit about this, I've got about seven videos, all thirty seconds or less, and I'm going to play them for you. But this class is, it says there, it's U H S Animal and Plant Sciences class. They, Ms. Jack is the teacher of that class. She's also the garden coordinator, and for their final, they had to plan a garden bed, plant a garden bed. I have to do that again. And then maintain them. And so my video-taking abilities get progressively better, as you will see, this first one is very hard to hear. But John, if you can play, so I've got Jalen here on the left, and the middle is Kirsten, and then on the right is Arlen and Marley, and if you can play their videos.
I planted eight leaves right here, and then for right here, I planted two layers of onions. These are flowers. They're called nestershoes. They're really good. They were supposed to be corn right here. Not sure what happened. And I'm kind of blinking on what I put right here, so forgive me for that. I put broccoli right here, this, and then I put radishes right here. And I like this class because it's very calm, you know, you get to just plant stuff, and you don't really have to stress about what you're doing, and.
He was really shy.
Actually, yes. Outside of class, we planted my own strawberry plants. And so with those techniques, strawberries are growing really well so far, and, yeah. And for our final project, we planted this garden. In our garden, we have carrots, dahlias, some onions, and.
Some broccoli, arugula, zinnias, some basil, and some snapjacks.
And you couldn't see, but Kirsten in the middle said that she, the strategy she learned for growing strawberries in school helped her plant her strawberries at home, and her strawberries at home are thriving.
We're in Ms. Jack's class. It just seems like a lot of work. What we do is we learn about animals, and we learn about plants. Out here is a small part of what we do. This is the gardening area, and it consists, right now, it's consisting of multiple finals and everything. In the classroom, what we do is we learn about plants. We learn about the different type of plants, like monocots and dicots. We learn how to identify, and basically, honestly, a lot of this is outdoor stuff.
Our semester was mostly about animals, but our second semester focused on plants. I personally really love, like, the community and, like, outdoorsiness of this class. Like, you feel like, especially with, like, how small our class is, but, you know, it's, you feel more connected as a class because we're all working together and learning everything. And like Robert said, we've been on a lot of field trips.
Okay, one more on this page.
But I recommend it, yes, in any class. It's going to be a lot of work. But the lot of work that I'm talking about is hands-on work. Half the time, we're doing hands-on stuff. You're going to learn more doing hands-on than you are note-taking. When you're note-taking, you're copying down what a teacher is putting on the board for you. That is nothing you're going to learn experience or skills from. Out here, we're growing our own little garden right here, in the entire garden in general. We've learned how to grow plants. We've learned when and why, and how to take care of them. We've learned, in general, a lot of outdoor stuff that we wouldn't have known if we never built this class.
So that was Robert and Kirsten. They were my high school video people. And then this is Rose in middle school.
I like Garden Club because it's very, it's like a very big stress reliever for me, and it helps me a lot to calm down. And I used to do a lot of gardening when I was little, and I still like it to this day. It's like a therapy for me, because I get to plant the dirt, get dirty, and it's like a carefree activity for me.
When I went over there, it was a very small garden club because most of them were going to the eighth grade dance that night, but she was really, really sweet and helpful. And then Yankee Ridge, they are doing all of the things because they are very close to Solo Gracia Farm. So I took this picture. This was their, they do Tuesday after school garden club, and then they do Mondays and Wednesdays. Towards the end of spring, they were doing lunchtime, eleven thirty to twelve gardening club, where a lot of kids were choosing to skip their recess so they could shovel dirt, which was pretty amazing. I told them to give me their toughest look as they posed here with their shovels, which was pretty sweet. And then I've got three videos on the next slide, which are all going to start at the same time, and they're very short videos, but they're very, very nice. Oh, I forgot to talk about this, not the next slide. So because they're so close to Solo Gracia Farm, some of you may know, but approximately two years ago, or a little bit more, they bought twenty-nine acres at the end of Mumford Road and, or Street, and the four acres that they were originally using has become their community classroom. And so their outreach person Fiona, who is in the white hat in these pictures, is in charge of their community classroom, and so she formed a partnership with the garden club at Yankee Ridge. We did Fridays on the farm, and you can see after school, we would, oops, we would all walk to Solo Gracia, and then they would do activities where they're watching a video about different early spring crops that they could grow, and then they chose what they could grow. They planted some things. They harvested dill and parsley and taste-tested things and made ranch dressing, and then put it on some saddle leaves. So it was just, you know, all aspects, growing, choosing, harvesting a little bit. So that has been a really great experience. It got started kind of late in April, and they only met maybe four or five times because we had a rainout and then a holiday, but that's something that I think we'll continue to do. That was a really nice program. And then now, three videos at once. Nope, still not. The other thing that Yankee Ridge did is they bought tower gardens, which are quite an expense. Hannah, the garden coordinator there, I believe, got grants to buy those. They run about twelve hundred each, and that school has two or three of them, and that's what they did during the winter. And like six, eight weeks, you can go from seeds to, you know, a big plant like that. And so the garden towers sort of rotate to different teachers, and then like at the end of each cycle, they have a salad day where the kids get to harvest what they've grown. So that is a great activity for the winter when it's hard to do any sort of gardening activity. But, oh, testing water pH, so that was a good activity, too. You have to fill the bottom of it with water. You have to test it, I don't know, a couple of times a week, and then you have the acid in the base, and, you know, however it is, you have to match it to the color. It was great science.
Hi, I'm Theo, and what I can help is grow more plants and be healthier.
That was Estefania. In the middle is Theo.
The best thing about Garden Club is that we help the earth grow more plants and be healthier. When I joined Garden Club is because it's a nice just getaway, to get away from, like, all the things that is happening. Also, like, you can just garden all you want. For, I really like digging up the dirt and mulch, putting it in the wheelbarrow, and then just spreading it out over there. But for me, just Garden Club overall, it's been a really fun experience.
And then Berna.
And I love being outside, and I'm just tired of doing the same thing at recess, so I join Garden Club because we can do different things, like plant seeds and dig up soil and stuff like that, and it's just really fun. And I like Garden Club because I get to meet new people that is also in Garden Club, and I, and.
I saw Theo later that day, and I said, hey, your video turned out really good, and he said, I did it all with the sprained ankle. I'm going to go back here a little bit.
Hi.
Oops, sorry. So this picture was taken the same day they had kindergarten graduation, and I don't know if you can see the girl in the back. She's got white shorts on and a white top, and there was a big pile of compost, and all of these kids are digging, and like, okay, it's noon, you got to go back to class. They were in the pile, hands in the pile. The garden, or the farm to school coordinator and me loved that we couldn't tear them away from digging in the soil, and the mom and me was like, please stop it. You're wearing all white, quit. But it was, it was, it's really sweet to see kids get so excited about that, and I'm going to pass forward there. Oops. Okay. So currently, we were fortunate in that the farm to school grant that got canceled for this year was not us. We got funded in twenty twenty-four, and it was a two-year grant. So we are good through June through twenty twenty-six, and then we currently have a City of Urbana Sun grant that will pay for garden supplies, and we're going to incorporate some field trips to pay for buses or entry fees, that kind of thing. And we've been told that pending city council approval, we also will receive a community services grant, which will pay for garden coordinators, which is huge, because we have, what you saw on the previous slide, that we have all of those garden coordinators. The ones that split, they just take half the stipends. We don't do extra there. But that really, you know, I think a lot of these garden coordinators would do it even if they didn't get paid, but it's really important to show that we value what they do because they really do a great job. I feel like I've left a lot of stuff out, but I've had a very long presentation, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Board members, any comments or questions? Gosh, my mic's turned up. That's really, really fantastic. It's just so much fun to see something like this, see the kids so engaged and learning in interactive and playful ways. It's awesome. Thank you for doing this.
Are you doing anything at the high school to recruit more students? They said that the class was pretty small.
So Joan is the garden coordinator there, and she uses that garden for all of the classes that she teaches, and then she has workdays, which get advertised, so if more kids want to come help out on a Saturday morning or other times, they're certainly welcome to. We try to put that word out there.
Other classes besides that particular one?
Yes, yeah, yeah, for sure. And every garden coordinator does it different. Like Hannah at Yankee Ridge, she had that after-school program and a lunchtime program. Like Tori is here, and she just takes students out when there's an activity to do, and a lot of the garden coordinators will do an after-school thing with the after-school program kids, and it just kind of however works best for that school and that teacher.
Anyone else? Great, thank you so much. And next up are our school improvement updates.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to just get us started for school improvement goals for today. One thing that I wanted to do was to start with our two schools that went from targeted to comprehensive this year in order for me to kind of lead the way and start with just some highlights from their needs assessment that was completed at both schools as well. So once I go over some of the, some of the highlights of the needs assessment, and then King will go, and then Thomas Payne will go, and we'll keep continuing with the designated schools. So the purpose of this is really just so they didn't have to put a bunch of this in their, in their slide decks. They're following a template that everybody had, but I wanted to just highlight some things so that you all understand why you may see some of the action steps in their plans as well. So the air assessment gave us like a district view of how we can support these two schools, and the first kind of key point was leadership and vision. And so some of the findings was we need to kind of like widely share the mission of the school district, which, you know, we just completed a strategic planning, but also as schools are rolling out their new SIPs as well to make sure that all their staff and their community members know their goals as well. So some of the things that we're doing to implement that is really having more frequent SIP meetings, making. making sure that teachers are signing up for committees that, um, are directly aligned to the SIP goals. And just more training for our leaders as well on kind of some systems thinking and continuous improvement cycles, which we just wrapped up our two days of school improvement planning. And so I would say the teams did amazing work these past two days to really like plan out thoughtful, um, goals, key activities. And then they also completed their quarter one PD plan. The second one, um, highlighted in the needs assessment was curriculum instruction and assessment. Um, and they found that, of course, we have now curriculum in place, but it's inconsistently implemented. Um, there are gaps that still exist in some of the collaborative planning. And we need to increase our instructional rigor, but also provide that differentiated support. So some action steps from that, you'll see that schools have SMART and Smarty goals to really help with that differentiated support. Um, there are some schools who also have some observational, uh, tools that they'll use to, um, inspect what we expect, right, in a sense of are we consistently, um, teaching with our curriculum with fidelity? And we'll have some PD around some high-yield instructional strategies that are gonna push the, um, the instructional rigor within the classrooms as well. Culture and climate came up. There are positive classroom environments observed, but there's limited student voice. Um, we need support with increasing family partnerships. And how do we ensure that our administrators, um, are supported as well? And so as we've discussed in previous talk, um, especially in the last strategic plan presentation that I was here for, how do we lift up student voice? That's always something that we're thinking about. Six twelve, it used to be more of a, um, high school kind of goal. But with the new MEP role, we're trying to make sure that that is a six twelve role. But we've also had teams think about in their culture and climate voice, I mean, culture and climate goals as well. How are they going to, um, keep an eye on sense of belonging and what students are saying through our panorama survey? And another thing is we are going to, um, make sure that whatever they, their goals that are our, in culture and climate, that they have a way to check those, whether they are looking in panorama, whether they are, um, creating their own kind of tool, making sure we have a morning meeting for SEL explicit instruction. We have seven mindsets that we're kind of rolling out for SEL, um, instruction. And that is K twelve as well. So really trying to build up student voice and making sure that we're engaging families through that process, um, with relationship buildings as well. And so some family partnership activities with, through our, like, FACE members are also, um, a part of the school improvement plans as well. Targeting instruction and support. Um, so really thinking about our MTSS frameworks, um, that multi-tiered system of support, um, how we're thinking about enrichment, college and career readiness, and how we are supporting inclusive and, inclusive and consistent practices. So this is work that we've definitely already talked about throughout this year with trying to decrease the dis- disproportionality with, um, our discipline data in, in particular. But I would say this is also a work we've done on an academic level as well with tier-two meetings. Um, we are also working to restructure our MTSS frameworks. And teams have this as key strategies as well within their academic and some of the behavior goals too. So making sure that we have alignment across our strategic plan, um, based on this feedback, but also what you'll see in everyone's school improvement plan. And the last thing too, um, the support that they're gonna receive from district office. And so making sure that the, the coaching and support is intentional and that we are providing, um, support as they roll out their quarter-one PD plans to their staff with resources, um, with tools. We have some resources already, uh, available to them specifically around those high-yield instructional, um, strategies as well. And that we're there to support them, um, through some quarterly data reviews too, that we will do as a team. So there's now also like a benchmarking, uh, tab on their school improvement template where they have to make sure they're inputting data. And so we can see, um, across the year. So right now they have baseline data in, but then there's a fall, winter and spring, um, tab that they'll have to continue to put data in, that we always have access to, of course, in order to look at how we're doing, have thorough conversations and provide that support for teams. Any questions about what I went over before we start specifically King and Thomas Payne, so that you all kind of see these key strategies and the goals, um, implemented based off of this feedback?
Please go ahead.
So, good evening, the board members. I am so excited to tell you about the end of the, of the two-day school improvement plan training, the planning and how, um, it all came together. Um, I wanna give some shout-outs from, to the people from district office that made it all, um, a smooth process. Uh, Juan and Ms. Chastity did a huge work. Uh, the amount of planning that went into it and the document that she has mentioned is a beast. And, uh, we are all appreciative that it really walked us through the process. Um, she also created an excellent example to follow and it was easy to collaborate with the teams and come up with this plan. Um, and I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Yolanda Smith and, um, Ms. Lisa Hoing, who joined us for the first, um, day of planning, and, um, also Ms. Christina. Um, all of them were, uh, were in and out, uh, of small groups and made sure that our planning was going smoothly. Um, my wonderful team, um, with King, uh, sat down and did a fantastic work. Um, so, uh, first we have really dived into the data from the previous school year. And unfortunately, we didn't have a, a whole lot of good progress to report on ELA and math. Um, the last, uh, school year goal of, uh, ELA was that the eighty percent of twenty-one targeted African-American third through fourth grade students will meet or exceed their projected, uh, student growth goal. On map testing, we got only forty percent of those students to meet or exceed. Um, and the math goal, uh, that also targeted, um, the same, um, group of people, but, uh, grades second through fifth, um, only thirty-two percent of those students met, uh, or exceeded their projected growth goal. Um, one thing is, um, with the attendance, there was some movement from, uh, with the positive movement from the chronic abstentism. Uh, so from, from fifty percent, uh, so will, uh, from thirty percent to fifteen percent was the goal. We saw some decrease in twenty-eight percent, uh, but still a lot of chronic abstentism. So looking at those goals, um, the team has come to a conclusion that, uh, the root causes of, uh, the lower performance on math and reading were due to abstentism, the lack of culture of learning, uh, staff turnover, including administration. Everybody agreed that was, uh, really deeply impacted the, um, the learning. The lack of building-wide student behavioral management system and lack of MTSS procedures for academic and behavioral support. Um, so, uh, we have also looked at a lot of different data to, uh, come up with the goals and the Smarty goals, including the, uh, AIR, uh, results that Ms. Chastity went over, uh, five essential survey, um, and, um, the map testing. So, um, the goals for the next school year that the team has set up is the attendance goal for chronic abstentism. We hoping to see it going down to twenty percent. And our Smarty goal is to focus on third through fifth grade students where we have seen the biggest issue in chronic abstentism. And, um, getting that percentage from thirty-three to twenty-three percent. Um, we're gonna achieve this by doing attendance data and, um, tier-two and tier-three attendant, attendance data and interventions. Uh, specifically, we went into further, um, key strategies, uh, related to our, uh, creating panorama attendance, um, plans and working with the SEA. Uh, the next goal is the culture and climate goal. Um, that has reflected the, uh, AIR, um, recommendations about, uh, strengthening of MTSS framework that were emerging but not quite consistent. So the, um, the culture and climate goal is focusing on a reduction of suspensions uh, from fifty-five to, uh, we are hoping to cut it in half or more. Um, and the focus group on our Smarty goal is we're gonna focus on fifth grade students uh, by implementing MTSS supports with fidelity and strengthening classroom behavioral management. Uh, we will be using CHAMPs and tier-two and MTSS procedures to achieve that. And we have picked, um, the fifth grade to, uh, focus on due to the data on current fourth graders that were, was a disproportionately large amount of suspensions. Uh, the next, uh, goal is literacy. And again, we have taken into consideration the, um, suggestions from AIR uh, about, um, more need for collaborative planning, instructional rigor and differentiated support. Um, so our goal, uh, will be, um, that by the end of next school year, second through fifth grade students will meet or exceed their projected growth, uh, goal in literacy. That is, um, followed by a Smarty goal specifically focusing on African-American students. And, um, we want to see forty percent of second through fifth grade students exceed, uh, or meet their projected growth goal. Um, we are gonna follow that cohort from current, um, year to next year. So, uh, the baseline data that we have for these students are for the current first through fourth grade student. That's gonna be second through fifth grade students next year. And we're gonna achieve that by really diving into CKLA lesson planning with fidelity. Uh, we have created a master schedule that will allow, uh, collaboration for all grade levels. And, uh, we will be, uh, pursuing PLCs to really help plan and implement, uh, some, some supports to achieve these goals. Um, the last goal is a math goal and, um, it is similar to our literacy goal in terms of we are focusing on the same cohort of students, second through fifth grade next, um, school year. And we want to see at least fifty percent of those students meet or exceed their growth goal. Uh, we have, uh, also focused on specific group, uh, of students, um, which are African-American students. And we wanna see thirty-six percent of those second through fifth graders meet and exceed their goals. We're gonna, um, focus on two strategies, non-linguistic representation and cooperative learning to help them achieve their math goals. Um, so based on all of those goals that I have just gone over, um, we have created a first, uh, quarter PD. And we're focusing on essentials, um, such as CHAMPs, which is framework to create consistent expecta- consistent expectation for classroom management. We're gonna, um, dive into CKLA curriculum and have a PD on co-teaching strategies. Uh, we will, uh, explicitly go over non-linguistic representation uh, and cooperative learning strategies in, uh, to increase the engagement in math and, uh, focus on procedures throughout the whole building, specifically MTSS and, uh, panorama. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
I know one of the questions we have to ask is what else do you need and how else can we help your school? I know throughout the school year, students come and go, um, and that's, uh, something that's just been accepted. But one thing that I've noticed at King School is that there are a couple of grades that have pretty high, um, attend, um, student numbers in their, in their grades. And I was just wondering how that's affecting your goals and if, um, either it's hard to make a projection for next year. But is that something that, that, that needs to be addressed?
We definitely watch those numbers. Thank you for your question. Uh, right now we have three classrooms, uh, for all grades except, uh, third and fourth. And so we are focusing on those students. The, the third and fourth, uh, grade, uh, currently were larger classes. However, with being such a transient population, we are watching those numbers of, uh, enrollment for the next school year. Uh, one, one way that, um, eh, we're gonna support those students other than consistent administration and, uh, presence in the classroom is, um, we are more staffed this year in terms of, uh, tier-one intensive teacher support. So we will have three, um, three, um, tier-one intensive teacher support instead of one that we had last year. Those teachers, um, together with the CIT, will be supporting primarily grades, uh, K-one. Uh, but, uh, for the new teachers that are coming into the district, we are also gonna focus on helping out those teachers who might need some extra help with the CKLA. Um, the other way to, um, to help those students is just establish those procedures too, that right now are lacking. And we really felt like with establishing the correct MTSS procedures and have more like a wraparound approach, that, uh, the students can feel more supported in the classroom.
Anyone else?
Make a comment to Chastity and Yolanda and the others that worked on this plan because I think it's definitely needed and really appreciate you all implementing. And I think, looking forward to seeing it work.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Jennifer. Your, your mic's off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just give a shout-out to her team for coming today too? So they did two days of work and then they were like, we'll be there at six. So shout-out to her SIP team members as well, who are part of this planning process and were dedicated to coming with her today to present.
I was gonna say, Paul, Mr. Douglas, are all your folks here yet? Not yet. Okay, we'll keep going.
While they're sitting down, could I ask my question?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'm, and I think this could be a question for everybody. When, um, because in many of the programs, you talked about, um, projected, doing better than the projected growth. Does the projected growth mean one year's worth of growth for each student across the board? Or does each student have kind of a projected growth target and you want him to do better than his particular projected growth? So if somebody could answer that question during the, sorry.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Andrea Jackson, principal at Thomas Payne School.
Melanie Furch, I'm the assistant, uh, principal here at Thomas Payne.
All right. And we're excited to present, um, the progress on our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school improvement goals and to introduce the newly developed ones for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, we share, um, this collective, um, information with our school improvement team. So we were here on behalf of that team that, um, worked really hard over the past couple of days. We also want to recognize Jessie Bradford, um, curriculum director, and Maria Elvier as, uh, the facilitators. Um, with, uh, their contributions were very instrumental in shaping these objectives. Um, we also want to thank Mrs. Beckless as well, um, for her call to action to ensure that, um, there was equity across the board with the school improvement goals um, and that there is some shared leadership when it comes to all of the plans.
All right. So, uh, with the, um, sticking with the mission of Urbana District, we, uh, at Thomas Payne are committed to, um, creating this plan that, uh, is going to be supportive of the community, equip our students and nurture all learners and, and have them have, uh, success.
So, um, in our map reading assessment, our goal was to um, increase that percentage of our first and uh, through fifth grade students meeting their uh, projected growth objectives from thirty-nine percent to fifty percent when comparing fall 2024 to spring 2025 data. Um, we surpassed that goal in the winter, achieving fifty-three percent growth. However, when that May benchmark came, um, it had declined to forty-five percent. Looking at uh, map, math uh, assessment, our goal was to increase that percentage uh, for our first through fifth grade uh, students meeting their projected growth targets from thirty-three percent to fifty percent when comparing uh, fall to spring. Um, again, uh, we had got just shy of that fifty percent mark at forty-nine percent. Um, and then it declined as well to forty-four percent. Um, and finally, last, our um, attendance data. Um, we looked at that chronic um, absenteeism, students that are in the critical category. Um, and as shown on panorama, from fall to winter, it dropped down. We got to our um, ten percent goal. But unfortunately, that uh, that uh, chronic absenteeism had risen to thirty-seven percent. And while we're encouraged by the progress from May to May of 2025, the data still shows that there's a lot of room for growth, um, both in academics and attendance. So we took a deep dive into our root um, cause analysis. We identified several different barriers that prevented the school from uh, meeting its uh, school improvement goals this year with um, absenteeism being a primary factor. Um, discipline measures such as exclusionary disciplinary measures actually feeds into that student um, absenteeism as well. So whether it be time out of class or in school or out of school suspensions, that also adds into that. Next up, uh, dysregulation or lack of coping skills or conflict resolution. Um, those um, lack of skills definitely impacts a student's ability to focus on their academic goals. Um, there are also cases where instructional time was lost due to classroom disruptions, um, including uh, teachers having to stop uh, in order to help students uh, either regulate or um, make sure that uh, students were um, focused and safe. Um, definitely with a new curriculum, uh, there were some academic frustrations due to the gap, uh, the achievement gap for uh, many of our students and the rigor of the grade level curriculum. And finally, um, we saw a great need for strengthening systems within MTSS uh, framework. So in reflecting, um, we definitely leaned on support from our I READ and I COUNT tutoring for especially our younger students. Um, we felt that the administrative walkthroughs were really helpful in uh, making sure that CKLA and a lecture of math were implemented with fidelity. And we definitely saw that data reflected um, from our CKLA coach that came through. Um, this year, there was a lot of professional development to help support teachers, whether it be from the district or um, in-house within our building to support CKLA. Um, the co-teaching model was very supportive um, in helping student, uh, helping our teachers to implement um, the new literacy curriculum with fidelity as well. Um, we felt that the progress monitoring tools embedded like M-Class intervention um, paired really well with CKLA and helped um, our students to develop some literacy skills based upon where they um, were developmentally. And then finally, um, the restructuring of our Tier Two and Tier Three systems uh, was helpful in identifying students that um, in particular had challenging behaviors, um, whether that was need for their social academic or intervention groups, or um, behavior plans, or um, check-in, check-out systems. That was really helpful in decreasing those um, challenging behaviors.
So we'll get into uh, what you just uh, saw earlier, um, in regards to taking a deeper dive, uh, our achievement gap analysis. We analyzed our strengths and, and uh, areas of weakness. Um, we came up and created our SMARTY goals um, through our four priority uh, areas. Our key strategies for each goal, you'll see our assessment targets, um, as well as um, adult and student performance measures, and then our action steps that we'll take. So our first goal is uh, around attendance. And so our SMART goal, using attendance reports from panorama, we're going to increase the attendance percentage from ninety-three percent in May of 2026. Um, our SMARTY goal, breaking that down, will reduce chronic absenteeism rate of our uh, black students from fifty-one percent to forty-one percent using attendance reports from panorama. We're also going to increase our family connections through postcards, uh, making uh, phone contacts. Uh, we're gonna do that quarterly. Uh, we're gonna provide families with attendance expectations. We're also going to form attendance, uh, a form, a form and attendance committee to create and implement school-wide attendance celebrations, uh, quarterly celebrations, uh, monthly trophies, explicitly teach students attendance expectations, and engage students with High Five Fridays. Let us know if you wanna be a part of those High Five Fridays to come and meet us students as they arrive. Our second uh, goal is around culture and climate. And so uh, our May 2026, we're gonna reduce the number of major discipline referrals by thirty-five percent. Uh, we're going to focus on decreasing that number uh, for our students of color uh, by twenty-five percent. And then we're really going to strengthen our Tier One supports uh, around uh, PBIS and um, the new implementation of CHAMPs, and then strengthening our Tier Two and Tier Three supports and systems.
Next up is the goal for literacy. So the SMART goal is that for 2025 to 2026 school year, fifty percent of students in grades first through fifth will meet or exceed their projected growth on map reading. And then um, digging a little bit deeper into that um, data into our subgroups, by the end of the year, um, twenty black students in grades second through fifth who fell below the fortieth percentile will meet or exceed their projected growth in spring. And so that's gonna, going to be done by more targeted small group instruction and create um, our professional learning committee protocols, just a stronger framework for that collaboration. For math, for the SMART goal is that for the school year, fifty percent of students in grades first through fifth will meet or exceed their projected growth uh, goal. And map math for fall to spring, digging a little bit deeper into that disaggregated data, um, thirty black students in grades second through fifth who fell below the fortieth percentile will meet or exceed their projected growth goal in the spring map math uh, data. And this is going to be done through cooperative learning, making sure that students are um, having discussions about math and learning from one another. And also creating that PLC or that professional learning collaboration, strengthening that so that's uh, all of our teachers feel supported as we're pushing the needle forward. So the quarter one um, PD focus is definitely gonna be um, focusing on PBIS and CHAMPs, which is that new framework that was also uh, discussed in the previous presentation. Ongoing data analysis and goal setting. Um, we also know that, you know, our school improvement goals are something that is ongoing process that is revisited throughout the school year. And also reinforcing, reinforcing that effort and providing uh, recognition for our students, whether it be for their academics or their attendance, and a stronger family, uh, school, family, and community partnership, uh, making sure that our schools are feeling welcoming and um, that collaborative uh, responsibility for everyone. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Board members, any questions?
I'll say, Chastity, I don't know if you wanna be, maybe to, yep, to respond to member Hickson's question?
Sure. So if I'm remembering correctly, it was the latter of what you said. And so each student gets their own individual um, growth target. So they assess them in the fall. And they're saying, if you're in class and you are learning, you are expected to grow by this many points by the spring. And so those growth targets are used for our information. So that's how we determine who made those growth targets. And we're looking at fifty percent of the students making them, right? And of course, we wanna aim for higher in order to close that opportunity and achievement gap. Because when students are exceeding their goals, they're getting closer to closing that gap. I will say that, that the goals don't, they're making their growth goals doesn't necessarily determine that they're on grade level though, right? It's just them showing growth.
Are most of the growth goals a year, like even if they're in fourth grade, but they're working at second grade level, by the end of the year, they'll be working at third grade level? Or do they vary very much from that?
They do vary, right? So it is adaptive. Um, and so if you um, recall their data, like there was some spikes in like, yes, by the winter, kids were doing well because their growth goal in the winter is smaller, right? So it might be only two or three points versus their overall goal might be ten points. And so they're saying, within that point of time, yes, you've grown the way that you're supposed to. But then we have like five or six more months in the school year where it kind of dips. Um, and so students, it is adaptive. So it will work with them. The questions will get harder or easier depending on how they're responding.
Andrea, you mentioned that you appreciated the tutors that came in and to help the, the students. Is that something that um, is gonna continue for next year? And how can we get some more people in to help you?
Yeah, I certainly hope so. Um, I think I count I Ready has been in the district for a while. So yep, I, I believe it's gonna continue with all of our buildings.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I'm glad that there is a blueprint for this and so that the parents and the community can be on the same page as the school. And I think it'll be very helpful to have something documented and so that you can reference back to. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, thank you, Principal Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're ready, Mr. Douglas? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and let the students do their coaches come on up and however you guys wanted to. As they come up, they're wearing their state qualifier t-shirts.
Yeah.
So yay. We'll let them explain all their hardware metal that they have.
Well, um, I'd like to say thank you to the board. Um, thank you to Dr. Abbott Tatum, the administration for allowing us to have this chance um, at coming up and acknowledging um, these accomplishments of these student athletes. Um, we had a really tough uh, season as um, going through track, the weather can definitely uh, do certain things to you. And for our boys, they actually, I think they only ran about three meets because every meet for them was being canceled due to the fact that in- inclement weather was coming in. So um, sectionals was really um, impressive. Um, overall, we've, we did have a solid season. Um, I know this isn't the full team right here, which um, Jack can go through the uh, individuals. I have it right here. But um, I'm just gonna do the recap in regards to um, leading into sectionals. So Unity, which is a big meet for us, um, our boys went and won the whole Unity meet, uh, eighth grade boys, which was huge for us. Um, at that time, we have individuals that uh, podium uh, pretty much in every single event. And that's what you really are striving for, to compete with um, a lot of these teams uh, when it comes to a team title, is making sure you have individuals um, that can uh, bring points to the table. Um, our girls, seventh grade team, uh, they took second place. And at that time, Gemma was injured, which that changes things when we have long jump and, and certain other events that we uh, miss out on points. So we really speak about team uh, versus a I because we go after team titles. We really try to focus in on where can we put the best athletes um, in the best positions to bring um, points to the team. So um, they had a great season. Um, we went into sectionals um, on high. Um, but I mean, for, there was thirty, forty mile an hour winds, crosswinds, and we still came out um, on top, especially with our seventh grade girls, but also with our eighth grade boys of um, you know, either qualifying for state um, by winning the event or qualifying for state by making qualifying time. And that's what we preach uh, as we go through. Um, I know all the other coaches aren't here, but thank you to them cuz they also put in a lot of time. We have, we have two volunteer coaches that do amazing jobs. Um, and then uh, we also had two um, staff that are not here as well. And so I just wanna say thank you to them as well. Um, but I'll let Jackie go ahead and go through that.
Alright, so when I say your names, you guys are gonna step forward so the board can recognize who you are, okay? Cuz it's just a name to them, but we know you guys, alright? So the first individual we had, um, believe it or not, this is his first year during track. Um, I recruited him in the hallways. He was a basketballer. And I said, hey, what do you think about track? And kinda looked at me like, who are you? But he eventually figured out it's Coach Douglas. And I'm persistent when I see an athlete and see someone who can do some things. And um, this individual is Jaden. Go ahead and step forward, Jaden Bell. Like I mentioned, um, he is a basketballer. So he is a multi-sport athlete and academically sound as well. He is an eighth grader, which um, he will be moving on to the high school. Um, this year, um, he competed initially in the one hundred, the two hundred, the long jump, and the four by one. As Coach mentioned, as we got closer to sectionals, we had a conversation with him and said, hey, your one hundred time was just not getting to where we needed it to be. Um, they have to run like an eleven-eight. That is really fast to qualify. And he was at a twelve-one. We couldn't get him under that twelve, but that's still fast. So kudos to him for that. So we had a real conversation and say, hey, would you be willing to try high jump? And he just said, okay. Which is what you want from an athlete. And so believe it or not, three weeks, two weeks?
Um, he had two meet, well, meet and a half to get ready.
He had a meet and a half to get ready um, before sectionals. And he went in and he jumped the qualifying height for high jump. So he qualified not only in high jump and only did it twice, really, and in long jump. Um, and in long jump, he only jumped once cuz he still had his running events, qualified and was sectional champ. Um, he went to state. And again, first year during track, he got third in high jump at state, which is fantastic. And he also placed in long jump. He received seventh place. Is that correct? Seventh place in long jump, um, which is fantastic as well. He also um, recently, as an eighth grader, they give an athletic award. And he was the male athlete of the year for Urbana Middle School. So kudos to him. And his future is so, so bright. And we are excited to see that. Alright. Alright, the next one we have is Kayden. Go ahead and step forward. Alright, Kayden, he holds a special place in all of the coaches' hearts because um, this is our second year having um, Kayden on the squad. Last year, he missed state by, I mean, a tenth of a second. And um, he still was one of our leaders. And so one of the things that we um, do is we bring somebody with us to state who was really, really close and is definitely a leader of the squad. And last year, he had the opportunity to come to state and see it and fill it and be a part of it. Well, this year at sectionals, he got to punch his own ticket to state. So we are very, very proud of him. So he qualified in long jump and um, went out there and did what um, he needed to do. Um, he didn't get to where he wanted, but we are still, still so very proud of all of his accomplishments during the season.
And I, I'd like to just piggyback on, um, when we talk about the hundred, um, Kayden was just on the outside. But even that day, not one person in sectionals ran qualifying time. So then they just take the number one runner. So um, it's just one of those things.
Um, I'd like to also recognize Kylan, who is not here this evening, but she qualified in the four by two. Francisca qualified in the Francisca qualified in the four by four and the four by one. Kailin, also a first-time trackster, who is a volleyballer as well, so a multi-sport athlete. She qualified in the high jump. Olivia Boatright, she qualified in the four by four, the four by one as an alternate. And she is a seventh grader, but when you're at sectionals, you only get two spots for each event as an open. So the 100 and the 200 and 400 and so on and so forth. So we had Olivia because we had three girls who were really, really quick in the 200. We had her run the 200 as an eighth grader. And she won eighth grade sectionals as a seventh grader and qualified for state. So kudos to her. Ms. Braxton, go ahead and step up. I always call her Ms. Braxton because she is a true leader as well. She also has qualified at state for the last couple of years as an alternate. And it is an important job to be an alternate because you never know what could happen when you get to state. She's always focused, ready, willing to help, practices handoffs as if she's going to run the race. So we really appreciate Ms. Braxton and she qualified this year as an alternate in the four by two. Like to recognize Tremera Davis, who is not here, but she qualified in the 100 meter hurdles and was sectional champ as well as the four by two. And last year, as a seventh grader, she missed qualifying times for state in the 100 meter hurdles by again, a tenth. And this year, she came out on top and was sectional champs. And she placed at state.
She placed seventh at state this year. And going into sectionals, she actually did not run any qualifying times. We just kept telling her, hey, you're getting there, you're getting there. And then she took off, ran a 17.3 at sectionals, won sectionals, then she got to state, ran a 17.04, forced her way into the finals and ran a 17.02, which placed her in seventh. And I just, the way she dropped time going into state is just crazy.
We'd like to recognize Kennedy, who is not here. She actually transferred in this year. She came from Tulono and has been an asset and multi-sport athlete. She does volleyball and ran track this year. She qualified in the high jump, the four by one as an alternate, and the four by four. I'd like to recognize Charlie.
He's that guy.
Charlie is one of those kiddos that you just look at and he works every single day, day in and day out. And at sectionals, he ran his PR and qualified for state. I think he might have shocked himself. We were all really, really excited. And I honestly blame Charlie, who also got a PR when he was at state, for me losing my voice the next couple of days. Because as he was coming down the stretch, he knew he had to run around like a 215 to place. He ended up getting a 220, which is a PR, and that's 800. So it's just a sprint nowadays. But he looked up at me like, Coach, I don't know if I can do it. I'm like, keep going, Charlie, keep going. So we are so proud of him and what he has in store as an eighth grader. We'd like to recognize Azariah Jackson, who was at softball. That's where we were before we came here. She is a sixth grader and qualified for the four by four. We have Amia Johnson, who qualified for the four by four, the four by one as well. Janay, who is not here with us, she qualified for the four by two. Ms. Danae Amix. This is her second year. She is an eighth grader, so she'll be moving to the high school. She qualified in the four by two this year and was the anchor leg and was really pivotal in their success.
I, I would just like to say, even with that four by two team, we had some conversations because actually they were a four by one team. And we just kept looking and we're like, our times aren't there, our times aren't there. But on paper, you guys look like four by two. You can get in. You guys run a 28.5, all of you, you get in. And they got in on their first try on four by two through qualifying time. And then they PR'd again at state.
We'd also like to recognize Valdi Nana, who is a seventh grader, or is a rising eighth grader. She qualified in the 100, was actually the sectional champ, the 200, and the four by one. If you guys remember her from last year, she also qualified in those same events last year as a sixth grader and came back with medals. So that is fantastic. Last but not least, we have Gemma Douglas. Go ahead and step up. Gemma, this year, she was actually out for three and a half weeks before sectionals. And if you know, some of you guys know her, yes, she is our daughter. But she, she loves to compete. She loves to compete in anything, in the classroom, on the field, on the court, on the track, it doesn't matter. So being out for that three and a half weeks was tough as parents and as coaches. But she did what was best for her body and the longevity of it. She qualified at sectionals in the 200, the long jump, and the four by one, and as well as the four by four as an alternate. Just kind of talking a little bit about that four by one team, because I know you guys heard it. That four by one team, they were sectional champs. They are currently the school record holder. And going...
They, they ran 52 flat at sectionals, which at that time would have ranked, had them ranked number four in the nation going in into state as the number one.
So when they got to state, we were, we were the team to beat and everybody knew it. And that's a good feeling, but also it's a very, can be a daunting feeling. And I know they don't like to talk about it, but when you guys review and rewind this tape, it's gonna make you better and stronger and want it more. When they got to the meet at state, they ended up placing as runner-ups. It was a technicality. When you get to state, everybody has the same baton, everybody has the same markers. We just picked up the wrong marker this time, but we will learn from it and we will get better. But believe it or not, Gemma's the anchor leg. And when she got the baton, we were in sixth and we ended up in second. So if that tells you how fast our team is, they, they have nothing but great things to look forward to as eighth grade squad. But Gemma, actually, she is the IESA seventh grade 4A state champ in long jump. She's been battling all season, a lovely young lady from Mount Zion, who for all of the meets that we faced against her, she got her. So she knew going into state that she was gonna have to go after, as we say, Naomi. And believe it or not, Gemma was the fourth person. She jumped 4.97, I believe. And Naomi, on her last jump, jumped a 4.94. So all of us were on pins and needles watching those jumps, but she came out on top. So we are very, very proud of her accomplishments this season.
The one thing outside of all of the accomplishments that would love to highlight is, one, we had about, about 140 kids come out for track this year, just a ton of kids. And by the end of the season, you normally have around 80 that you're, you know, you're working with as you try to work through A and B schedule. And then as you go into sectionals, you tend to get down towards about 60 to 70 kids, just because you only get two entries per event. The team responded very well. You know, it's an exciting time. And the one thing that I want to say, I appreciate facilities, they made some training polls for us. You don't understand, those helped us so much. You see things and then you want to try it out. And the facility guys made some polls for us to work out with, had them over there. And we used those all season. So I just want you to know, we did use those and they definitely help us. But we just want to keep, you know, getting our hands around the track and, not just track and field, all athletics within Urbana. We have so many student athletes that are excelling at the highest level and we need to just make sure that they're being honored. We have a lot of records. We have a, we have a lot of individuals that have podium. And we have not gotten it up on the board. And I really think we need to get those up on the board and celebrate these kids because some are two-time podium, some are for the first time. There are definitely, Jayden is, is the record holder, I believe, in probably high and long jump. So those are things we definitely need to keep celebrating so that it's starting to push to other kids when they walk into the school and they say, oh, that's where I want to be. I know him. I know him. He played basketball. He went out for track and he did that in one year. Maybe I need to jump on board with what he's doing. And we've seen so many positive things. I would say our eligibility list was for having 140 kids. I would, I probably could list maybe 10 that was on there. And, you know, and, and just overall, just having that ability to support, have that support around us. Ms. Kearns definitely helped support, so we appreciate that. And Mr. Russell. I want to make sure we shout out the individuals throughout the season that definitely supported us. And one thing I will close out with is, you know, I hope we have the opportunity going into next year to, one, host our own invitational. We have the facilities for it. Teams now know Urbana is here. It's not, we're coming, we're here. So they look forward to running against us and then having the ability to host a sectional because that's all funding. We have not been able to go out and fundraise. We haven't had that opportunity. We've, our only, typically, our meet gets canceled because of weather. So hosting a sectional and invitational would only pump funds into us, allowing us to get more training. We have things that we need to buy for, for the student athletes in regards to, you know, sleds, just being able to get faster. Because as we got to state, the one thing we did realize is, girls and boys are getting faster. They're not getting slower. When you watch a hundred for seventh grade girls and they run 12.8, 12.8, 12.8 across the board. And it used to be if you could run a 13, you may have a chance to win it. You can't run a 13 anymore. You have to run 12.8 to have a chance to win state. So I, I think, you know, just having that opportunity to get in front of the board, thank you. Get in front of you, Dr. Albert Tatum, and just having that conversation of how can we help get more funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for representing the district with pride on and off the track.
I do have a comment to make, just for encouragement for the, for the team. Dominaja Taylor, that's my granddaughter. She actually was on ESPN this weekend. And she's from Urbana. So she started just where you guys are right now. So she did qualify for nationals. So she'll be going to Oregon. So you guys keep it up.
Thank you. Congratulations, you guys.
So we can pick up now with our school improvement updates for Lille. Oh, UMS first? Sorry about that. It's a different order in our agenda. But yeah, UMS first. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I would be remiss to not give Gemma Douglas an extra shout out. So her new administrative team got her a small gift just to say that Urbana's future is bright. And we're really excited to have a state champion in our space. And so we've got some work to do in terms of banners and plaques and things to update because we want to show off all of the great accomplishments for the team, but more specifically for our state champ. All right. So Urbana Middle School, 78 building. Melissa Kearns, principal. We're here tonight to just kind of talk through some successes from last year, the 2024, 2025 school year. And then obviously, we'll do some foreshadowing for 25, 26. I want to echo all of the great sentiment about how great the last two days have been in terms of planning with our administrative team, central office. Chastity has done an amazing job at creating tools for principals and school improvement teams to use as guidance as they work to create really intentional plans that are gonna drive all of the things that we want to see for our students. As an Urbana graduate, I can understand the importance of wanting to be proud of what you've accomplished academically and in all other areas. And so the school improvement process is, is key to that success. So thank you for all the work that you've done along with your team. All right. So the first slide here is gonna talk a little bit about the goals from this year. And so we had a goal for, by spring 2025, we would increase the percentage of students meeting their projected growth from 42% to 50. For math, we looked at by spring, increasing the percentage of students meeting their projected growth in math from 41% to 49. And then goal three was centered around chronic absenteeism. And we looked at decreasing the percentage of chronically absent students using our panorama data by at least 8%. What you'll see in slide two is the progress for that. So overall, our reading growth goal was 50%. We surpassed that goal and achieved 53%. So that's a huge win. For map, math growth, our goal was 49%. We surpassed that goal as well and achieved 54%. So that's also amazing work that's being done, just showing the growth and where we're trying to take the building. Chronic absenteeism was an 8% reduction, and that was the most exciting one because they actually achieved a 19% decrease overall for students who are chronically absent. So those three goals were surpassed this year. So we're really excited to create some pretty lofty goals to try to push ourselves forward. And so with that, we did some work around discussing what, even though we made all three of our growth goals in terms of reading, math, and attendance, we wanted to continue to push ourselves. So we looked at still, what are things that are keeping us from meeting even more broader and loftier goals? So we definitely center around absenteeism. That's still a very big and consistent issue we're experiencing. Student engagement. With that also comes school climate, right? The ability to have instructional quality that's consistent. And then making sure that our teachers are tooled with the ability to use data-driven instruction as consistently as possible to help drive academic outcomes to the right spaces. And by doing that, if we're gonna use the data-driven instruction, we need to make sure we have tiered interventions and supports that are gonna wrap around kids where tier one is just not as adequate. We need to do something different or more. With that, the school improvement components that we're kind of gonna use as kind of anchor points for this year is going to be data review. We did a lot of work in the last two days about achievement gap analysis. We're actually gonna present a little bit of a different style goal than you've seen tonight. We're gonna talk about identification of strengths and weaknesses of the building. We've done some staff surveys, family and community surveys, our five essential survey results to kind of build our priority areas. And then making sure that those key strategies are really succinct, really clear, and are well-supported within the building, not only from the teacher perspective, but families, stakeholders, also administration. Really wrapping around our school community and trying to bring us together even closer to achieve more overall. And so with that, I'm gonna dig into the fun stuff, which is this year's goal. And so one of our goals is by the 2025 school year, we want to reduce the percentage of chronically truant students by at least 10% with targeted strategies to support and engage students with disabilities who are also underperforming academically. One of the things that we noticed when looking at our panorama data is our students with disabilities were one of our largest subgroups in which they also are part of the absentee rate. And so we really want to build some intentional plans, not only to focus on our entire building, but more specifically looking at individualized education plans and how can we build attendance goals in there to help our students come to school more frequently, to make sure they're able to also meet the goals as their general education peers. Some key activities that we want to kind of shoot for, we're gonna do some fidelity work with school attendance data and do some daily verifications to making sure when students are marked present or absent, they actually are present or absent. We want to do some targeted attendance interventions. We're gonna do some work around panorama and helping teachers use it more frequently to identify students who are chronically absent. And then their ability to respond will be greater and hopefully more frequently. We also want to make sure we address student perceptions about school. We want our kids to come to UMS and want to be there. And so that has a very big driving force in terms of... of getting kids to school and the attendance rate. So we want to do some events, some incentives, things that will bring not only families to the table in terms of getting their kids to school, but also their kids can have that voice at home to say, hey, I want to come to school and I want to go to UMS. And so hopefully those things will allow us to create an environment that's attractive and will build a narrative that we can all be proud of in terms of attendance. The next goal is looking at culture and climate. One of the things we really want to focus on in 25-26 is reducing exclusionary discipline actions, primarily out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. We definitely want to go for higher than 10%, however, we recognize we've got a lot of work to do. Our numbers were pretty high this year in terms of our response rate for suspension, and so more specifically for physical aggression. So that's going to kind of be the area that we focus the most because we know we have a disproportionate number of students, this being an impact for them. More specifically, our students with disabilities and our black male students. Those are the two subgroups that are likely to be suspended more than any of their other subgroups of peers, and so we've got to target that. So how are we going to do it? We've got to use some internal systems like Skyward and Panorama. The district is going to be wrapping around CHAMP, which is a great behavioral classroom management support system for our teachers to utilize to build good culture and climate in their classrooms. We're going to utilize restorative chats. We're planning on some really cool training with Dr. Avery Tatum for our SRS staff so that they can support our teachers in helping with that restorative practice process. We're also going to do a substantial amount of work around trauma-informed practices. We've got kids that come to school with all kinds of makes, models, and creeds, and we need to be prepared to respond when they need our support. And so part of us being trauma-informed is really essential to that work. We also want to build some alternatives to exclusionary discipline. We have Refocus and RU as part of our building structure. So we want to better utilize those supports versus using exclusionary discipline outcomes for students. As was aforementioned earlier, we are using the Seven Mindsets curriculum. The 78 Building will have an intentional 30-minute time daily in which we'll engage our students in SEL work. And so that will be a huge buy-in for our teachers and our staff. It'll be a great opportunity to connect and hopefully deter some of those disciplinary events. Next one is going to be our literacy goal. As I mentioned, this will be a little different than what you've seen. We recognize that the projected growth goals are really important, but we also know that we're still not taking our kids all the way to proficiency. And so what we want to do in literacy and in math is we want to increase the number of students who are in the green. And for us, the green is the 61st through the 80th percentile. And that's kind of a really good on-target rate for students to have in terms of their score because that will help them be more college and career-ready. It will help them have a higher level ACT score, SAT score, whichever way we decide to go in the state, but it will help us make sure that we are adequately preparing kids for high school and beyond. And so we want to go from a 7% progress last year to 10, and we want to specifically focus on students with IEPs, our Black students, and our multilingual learners. How are we going to do that? We're going to use some very targeted, intentional instructional strategies. We want to use annotation, marking up the text, which is an AVID strategy. We also want to implement graphic organizers and then using intentional academic language. One of the biggest things that came out of school improvement today was talking with the teachers about what it means to get professional learning and having it go beyond the session, right? The time that we spend. And so the teachers talked a lot about understanding the strategies, implementing them, and then coming back and reflecting with their colleagues about how did it go? How can we continue to do better and look at data to see, is it actually working? And so that will be something that will follow that same mindset and mantra through our literacy and math SIP goals. Obviously, we're going to do some progress monitoring. As I mentioned, that's going to kind of be the center point of how we know if what we're doing is working. And then obviously, students will need tier two and tier three interventions that are going to be designated to support them as we want to meet those goals. Our goal is going to be for ELA to move 39 kids from the red, the yellow, and the orange, which are the three lowest performing categories, under the 61st percent, into that green. It doesn't sound like very many, but I think when we think about how red, or how yellow, or how orange a student might be, it's actually a pretty lofty goal. So our teachers are really excited about working really hard to move students into that direction, and we're excited to also see more kids hopefully help us close the achievement and opportunity gap. The last one is math. This one we're also really excited about. We're going to use MAP to help ourselves move from a 6% to a 10% growth percentage for students achieving proficiency. Our target focus is going to be fact fluency and problem-solving and critical thinking. As you know, fact fluency tends to be the one skill that holds a lot of students back. We tend to, you know, focus on being calculator-dependent and other things, and so we really want to make sure our students are able to kind of hang with their peers in terms of knowing their math facts and being able to use that to access higher-level math classes and coursework at the high school level. And so to do that, we're going to work with our teachers to specifically monitor the curriculum that we're using. And so what that means is we're going to kind of create a key activity that's going to support the SIP goal, which is 75% of a classroom of students in math will achieve 80% or greater on their curricular assessments. So we're really going to push teachers in the classroom to make sure that when they're giving these summative curricular assessments within the curriculum, we're actually trying to achieve proficiency. You know, a 70%, a 60%, a 40% is not enough. We want to be pushing for the 80% or higher. And so how we're going to do that is we're going to work on visual representations because that works with fact fluency. We're going to use thinking classrooms. So a whiteboard is going to be a very large friend to our students and our teachers in math classrooms. And hopefully, we'll be able to also include some fluency fact interventions and boot camps to kind of help boost some of our students' abilities coming from elementary and even in the middle level, improve their fact use and fluency. And then, as I said before, we'll also do some formative assessments in between those summative assessments, and we'll record those and reflect around those and do some item analysis work with those that will help us adequately place kids into interventions and be able to monitor their progress. And so that is our goals. Just to give you a really quick kind of snapshot of our PD plan, we kind of have built this in four different areas. Obviously, being an AVID school, working on the portrait of a graduate, that's going to kind of be our overarching umbrella. But then underneath those things are some essential skills that our students are going to need. They're going to need academic language. They're going to need the ability to summarize texts. They're going to need common language around expectations for student behavior. They're going to need a good trauma-informed response to an event. They're going to need fact fluency interventions and supports, and they're also going to need a year-long focus on attendance. And so we're going to work with our teachers all year long and not just quarter one at trying to teach them some new tricks and strategies to hopefully continue to monitor data and see our data continue to go in great directions. So that's our UMS SIP plan. Any questions?
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I really like the idea of working on fact fluency, and maybe that's because I'm old, but it seems like it's important. And I've wondered if you've spoken to the elementary buildings about that.
No, but I think it opens.
Because I think that working together and talking about that together would be a good idea.
Yeah, and our math curriculum currently has Math Talks built into it, which is opportunities for kids to dialogue and discourse about facts and understanding the visual representation of them. And I think we just have to give our kids more opportunities to practice. And so that's what we're going to do, is we're going to anchor really heavily on that to hopefully help them, you know, continue a pathway with higher-level mathematics at the high school.
How do you feel the yonder pouches have been received, anecdotally from the teacher's side?
From the teacher's side, they're very well-supported. I think the students, you know, obviously don't love the pouches as much. I think they're a great structure and system for us to make phones not a priority, especially with these lofty goals. We need a focus to be on instruction and not other things. And so for right now, I think the yonder pouches are definitely a huge win for Urbana. And so I think, you know, we'll continue to support them at the middle level. We've got some cool ideas about how to incentivize, you know, using the yonder pouch this year. And so, yeah, I think the feedback is really great that I've heard so far from teachers and even from families, too.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
What has been done with regards to the reconfiguration of your physical space in order to help you meet your goals?
Yeah, so we drew a completely new map of UMS, and so thank you to Mr. Ashman for giving me some really cool, big maps that I can, like, use dry erase markers on. But we basically are completely redesigning the building in terms of making sure that seventh graders and eighth graders don't have very many interactions. We're also reconfiguring where our elective and exploratory courses are in the building to make sure they're accessible, but not like randomly, you know, placed within the building so students aren't, you know, overly interacting. We're also going to have some spaces that are going to be closed off at certain times of the day to assure that kids aren't just going in locations and hiding and not going to class. And so we're going to have a new kind of structure and system for classroom placement and the staff. I know it was a little apprehensive at first, but I think once they saw the maps, they've kind of figured out, like, oh, that makes sense. And so we're really excited to welcome a new infrastructure. And I think staff is really excited about some of the changes that we're making, especially in terms of like the organization of the building. So it'll be hopefully really good.
Is that going to give you an opportunity to consider changing the length of your passing period?
Probably. Right now, I think we slated it at four minutes. I think that's generous. I think if the classes are right next to each other, we can definitely shorten it. And so that's something that we will definitely consider in the future in terms of like looking at some data this year to try to see like how quickly we can get that time down. I know, for example, it will be difficult when students go to exploratory. If they're in the seventh grade wing, it's a pretty far, I guess, you know, gallop all the way over to exploratory. So that's the longest time. So we'll have to do some thinking. Maybe those periods could be longer and maybe core classes where they're right next to each are could be shorter. That's definitely something we can do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There is a lot of interaction before and after school outside. Are there any plans for, to eliminate some of the commotion out there?
Yeah, I think first and foremost is adequate supervision. And so one of the things we've talked about is making sure people are in specific locations after school so that we can assure that kids get dismissed from the building and onto buses and to their transportation quickly, efficiently. I know one of the other challenges has been to kind of keep high schoolers away from the middle school area. And so we've got some plans already drawn up with the maps on where to kind of locate supervision. And then I think in general, we're going to do a lot of talking with our kids around school expectations. We want to redesign our MTSS system. We've been redesigning our school-wide matrix for PBIS and really centering it around like community safety and what it means to be responsible, what it means to be respectful, or even kind, and what it means to be safe. And making sure that all of the adults in our space are showing up, are having eyes on our students, and then they're, you know, having positive conversations with them and encouraging them to do the right thing. And with that also comes, like, if students are not, we will have consequences for some of those behaviors, but we want to work on the restorative side of trying to get them to positively, you know, interact with their peers and staff first. But we have some good plans for that, and hopefully we'll have a chance to update the board here about some of the things we've been putting in place and how it's been going.
Anyone else? Before you leave, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Cooper for his work this past year and helping us achieve what was a great report card. You guys at the middle school hit a lot of your goals, and I'm really excited about what's going to happen next year.
Yeah, same.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. I've known you for a long time, and I know what you can implement. You're going to do it. So I really appreciate everything you've done.
Absolutely. And I want to say thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to come to UMS and to lead. And so I'm really excited about our future, not only athletics, but with all the things we have in store. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last up is LEO. Thank you for your patience. Your mic's off, though.
Push. All right, thanks. All right, well, this is the LEO Elementary School Improvement Plan. We're excited about doing this. I think the big picture is that we're connecting the dots with everything, right? The next page is about strategic plan. Jennifer, Dr. Avery Tatum's goals, our leadership team's goals at the district, the school's goals and the teacher's goals, and the student's goals should all be the same type of thing. So we're trying to cohesively put that together and connect the dots for our teachers and then also for our community and our staff members and most importantly, our students. So I think that's key to look at when we look going through this process. Can you see some of the same things going on? Also, a lot of the work, Emily and I, we were pretty good classroom teachers at the time. I haven't been in a classroom for 20 years, although I've been in the classroom pretty much every day as an administrator. So Kristen Doty is a first-grade teacher. She's part of our school improvement plan. Ellen Archer Puffer is a co-teacher at LEO School as well. Katie Plotner is a curriculum implementation teacher. Max Smith is one of our third-grade teachers. Matt Chersky is our new student engagement advocate this year. He's done a fantastic job with attendance. Leon Matson, now named Sanford, Leon Sanford, is a fifth-grade teacher. He's been in our district for five years. And Hannah Cussinger is a fourth-grade teacher, too. So just to go through that process, those people are an important part of our school improvement team, and it represents all of our team. At LEO, we've all had all of our staff members be part of our school improvement team this whole entire year, broken into three teams this year, and we'll talk about that in a second as well. So we think it's, leading is like an organizational emphasis on everyone leading. It's just not the two of us doing everything, so. Obviously, we talked about stronger together, leading for the future. I was in the strategic team. Jennifer, I think you asked a good question about fluency for math. You'll have a little part about that and collaborating with our middle school in the future. But we know that we have to work on fluency for a variety of levels. Our school year, end of the year data, it was from last year. We didn't make these goals, but, you know, we're pretty good at looking at them. For, you know, we fell short in a little bit, but fall-to-winter growth, we had 52% for our students in English Language Arts for first or fifth grade, and then fall-to-spring growth was 50%. In math, we did a really good job from fall to winter for 61%, and then fall-to-spring was 52% of our students meeting their growth targets. We also know that it's important that achievement is part of this as well, just not the growth going forward. Our chronic absentee rate is kind of fuzzy math because many of our students weren't at LEO's last year, or they're at Yankee Ridge. It's a combination. We did, it is 22%. It was 26% according to the Illinois School Report Card, but it's really kind of apples and oranges. So we know we now have a baseline chronic absentee rate of about 22%, and that's pretty good from what we've seen in the past and in Urbana. So we're doing a really pretty good job of that and making relationships. Also, I just want to say, like, lots of these root causes and reflections, it's a thousand little things our staff members do, right? It's a thousand little things our PTA does, our parents do every morning. It's just not one thing. It's not just a school improvement plan. It's how we make students feel welcome and how successful they can be at school. Root causes are the same root causes everyone struggles with when we have difficulty in certain areas. Our chronic absenteeism is something we want to reduce continually. We'd like all of our students here every day except winter six, so. And then classroom disruptions, and then, you know, in Urbana and then other communities, too, is a lack of tier one and tier two instruction, or at least consistent instruction over the years. So when we implement a new program like CKLA, our fourth and fifth graders haven't had that program since they were in kindergarten or first grade. So obviously, we're going to have to see some hiccups there. But reflecting on it and similar success this school year is our CKLA program with M-Class, which is the old-school way, is Divels. But it really shows how students learn to read, right? Talks about letter name, letter sound, phonemic segmentation, phonics development, and then reading accuracy, and then obviously fluency and comprehension are the important parts at the end, when we hope every student's really a pretty good critical thinker about that. And our M-Class data has really shown a positive, hugely positive growth this school year, so we're excited. That's going to translate to MAP, and then eventually it translates to are students college-ready, or are they ready for being successful in the middle school, the sixth-grade center, and the high school as well. CHAMP's program, something I've used in a former district of mine, is very successful, has a common, a common way of looking at behavior for all of our, and is a common vocabulary for all of our staff, all of our students, and then we can share that with parents as well. As I said before, we have specific SIP action teams this year. Every certified staff member had to be part of an action team that we met monthly. We're going to continue that process next year. And then LEO Expectations was a pretty huge success as well. We're proud to say we didn't have many suspensions this year. It's kind of just over 10, and then the amount of days was 21. So we did a lot of good things. We shared a lot of good expectations and took action if we needed to help a student with their behavior. Oftentimes, it's not the behavior and the student, the student's trying to communicate with us, right? And how do we help that student get through whatever problems that they have? And how do we help that student get through whatever problems that they have? Our school improvement components, I will pour you with reading the slide again. It's the same types of things that everyone else has repeated today. But I do think it really is important that we have the equity piece involved as well. While sometimes our achievement gap isn't so great lately, but it's, it still is considerable opportunity gap for many of our students across our areas for attendance, for math, for reading, for writing, et cetera. So that being said, hello, Mrs. Riley.
Sorry.
That's all good.
So I'm going to present to you our four goals that we have for the 25-26 school year. So starting with attendance, by May, we would like to reduce the chronic absenteeism rate by 10%. So going from 22 to 19.8. And that is comparison from this current school year of 24-25. And we're going to use Skyward to measure that. We also are going to reduce the number of days missed by our black female students by 20% from this current school year. And we're going to use Panorama to measure that. So some of our key activities or things we're going to do to support these goals are our tier-two attendance day and data and interventions. We're going to have those individual attendance plans, but we're also going to target some of our whole school attendance. So we know that before and after breaks or those long weekends are times that we see a lot of our absences. And then there's specific months, like February is a challenging month as well as May was a challenging month for us. We're going to increase that family education and communication, really using our classroom teachers because we know a lot of the communication goes through them, no matter what we push out or the district push out. That relationship is there with the teachers. Those nudge letters, postcards, also increasing family visits kind of goes along with that. But then also constantly doing that weekly or daily review of attendance data and then also including that in our collaborations with our grade levels because attendance is a whole school initiative. And then just increasing those attendance celebrations individually by classroom and by whole school. And then we're going to continue to improve and document our systems such as MTSS. So then our second goal is focusing in on culture and climate. And so by May, the total number of classroom-based office discipline referrals will decrease by 5% from the 24-25 school year. And we're going to use our school referral data to judge that. And by May, we're also going to, the total number of classroom-based office discipline referrals for our black students will decrease by 10% from the 24-25 school year. And we're going to also use our school referral data. So some things we're going to do, Craig already talked about CHAMPs and we're going to making sure that that is being consistent throughout all of our classrooms and all of our school spaces. So not just our classroom teachers, but all of our support staff, too, are using and implementing that. And that'll be like our tier one. And then the implementation of our seven mindsets, SEL program, which will be our tier two to support a lot of the CHAMP stuff, too. We're going to continue to do those Lille Expectations in the PBIS and that'll be universal. It's really about that language, the consistency across all the spaces. And then training all of our staff in the use of Panorama. We have it, but making sure we're all using it in the same way. And then continue to refine and monitor those MTSS, our PLCs and our collaboration systems. Our third goal is surrounding literacy. So by the spring of 2026, 55% of our students will meet or exceed their projected growth in first through fifth grade, through targeted intervention and enrichment. And we're going to continue the implementation of CKLA in collaboration with our CKLA coach. And then also by spring, we're going to have 60% of our black students will meet or exceed their projected growth in first through fifth grade through the targeted intervention and enrichment as well, also using CKLA and our CKLA coach. So we're going to continue that support of our CKLA implementation. I think our teachers have a really good grasp now and I think we can dig a little deeper. And so we're going to utilize our co-teaching and coaching to support that. We're also going to continue our UFLI tier-two interventions for all of our students in identifying using M-Class, also known as DIBELS. Also tracking our unit assessments, using that data to inform it. And then differentiating instruction for all of our learners during our intervention time. I think some intervention times sometimes can get used in different ways. And so we're really going to make sure we're utilizing that time in the way we want to. And then globalizing or globally utilizing CKLA Boost and in mentum programs for those individual needs of students when they can't always work one-on-one with a teacher. Identifying similarities and differences in that background knowledge, those research-based strategies, those are embedded throughout CKLA. And so we're going to hone in on that and help use those to really support these goals and then continue to refine and monitor those same systems of MTSS, PLC and collaboration systems. And then our fourth and final goal is our math goal. So by spring of 2026, 60% of our students will meet or exceed their projected growth in first through fifth grade through the consistent tier-one instruction with our IM illustrative math and targeted intervention for number sense and fact fluency. Also by the spring for our black students, 65% of our black students will meet or exceed their projected growth through consistent tier-one instruction with illustrative math and that targeted intervention, also through number sense and fact fluency. So we're going to continue to differentiate instruction, but we're really going to hone in on those last 15 minutes of math instruction to make sure we're doing that. We're going to train staff to utilize edmentum appropriately for the individual needs, but then using extra math to focus in on that fact fluency. There's a lot of supports of that 10 minutes a day of that practice of fact fluency can really support the growth that we want to see. And then continue to refine and monitor those MTSS systems, PLC and collaboration systems. So we know that the living out the plan was really a focus on quarter one, but we really are using this as the whole school year, too. So we're going to do it throughout all four of our quarters and hopefully have a strong emphasis in the beginning of quarter one to really set the expectations and standards. And so that way we can build this community of all of us working towards these goals. And so Craig had already brought up how we have been using our school improvement teams this past year. And so we're going to continue that. And so we have our teaching and learning team, our PBIS and SEL, and our family engagement and attendance team. And they will work together to work towards these goals, but they're going to be the ones who are really making sure that those, those key actions and activities that we're doing are going to be implemented and that we're circling back to see if they're working rather than letting it get through the whole year without checking back in. And so our professional learning community is also going to be part of that in those collaboration meetings. So I guess we're at questions.
I didn't understand what you meant in the bullet point, similarities and differences and the effect size. What, what? I didn't exactly understand what you meant there.
It's just one of Marzano's strategies. Marzano has research-based strategies, just like John Hattie does. And so the average effect size is 0.4, I believe it is. And so it was like 1.6. So it's a greater effect size. We're just going to focus on that, on that strategy as we embed things in our reading and math programs as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. No worries.
Anyone else? Alright, alright. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our school improvement updates for the evening. So we'll move into our administrative reports. First up is a discussion on our board meeting calendar.
Okay, so you have a, I was going to say chastity as you go. Thank you so much. It is so wonderful to have a director of school improvement who distributes leadership and just used all of our cabinet members to support our principals and our school teams. Phenomenal work. You're doing an amazing job. Okay, so calendar. So you all have an outline and it is very much in alignment with what we did this year. And let me see, I was going to pull up this year's calendars. I had it in front of me, the actual school calendar. There we go. So the couple of times a year we have to make adjustments are fall break, which this year is October 13th through 17th. So you see, we've kind of gone outside of our first and third Tuesday routine for that month of October. And remember, just very similar to what we did this year, we want all of our staff members to be able to enjoy their fall break. And because prepping for board meetings and all the work that goes into preparing for a meeting involves so many different people at central office and at the buildings, that we want everyone to just be able to enjoy their break. So that is why we are having our first and fourth Tuesday meetings, which is what we did this year. I'm going to go back to August. I know traditionally, this board maybe doesn't even remember that. But years ago, we would talk about whether we would have that first meeting in August, but it has, since I've been here, it has been something that we have not really discussed as an option because we really need that August meeting for hiring, to approve new hires and just a lot of administrative and personnel appointments and things like that that happen early August. We'll be having a lot of discussion probably about the sixth grade center opening at that time. And we also have another press packet that is due at the end of August. So we'll definitely need both of those August meetings this year. Winter break fell very nicely with our winter break calendar. Winter break is January, I mean, sorry, December 23rd through January 2nd. And so our meeting schedule really does fall very nicely in line with, with the winter break. Sometimes we have to make adjustments in December and we don't need to do that this year. So that's awesome. Spring break is one of those months we always have to make a change because we are continuing to follow the university calendar for spring break, which is March 16th through the 20th. Also, we have those two meetings back-to-back in March. Instead of doing the first and fourth, which is what we're doing in the fall, we like to have those two meetings in March so we can make sure if we have any reduction in force needs. I know the state law and the, there's some changes in the school code around reduction of force where we don't have to meet that 45 days before the end of the year, but it's still been our practice to do so. So we give our staff plenty of time and notice and conversation and we're not waiting until the end of the year, even though we have a little more flexibility to do that. We want to keep that, those two March meetings as our goalpost to make sure that if we are doing any reductions based on grants or any other positions that we are needing to make changes, we're doing that at those two March meetings. I think those are the only areas I really wanted to highlight. We kept our time the same unless there's a reason why, if board members want to talk about the 6:00 PM time. I think it has worked really well, especially for having students come to our meetings more. I feel like it has been a little more participatory in terms of when we want to celebrate and recognize our staff and students, just having people come in person more often. That earlier start time really does help that.
Before we start, start time, I'd like to make sure that we're going to have a quorum in those August meetings.
Oh, yes.
So if people have known travel plans for August that conflict with these proposed dates, now would be the time to let us know.
Yes, please. For August 5th and August, especially the August 5th date, which is normally one of the reasons why it's been discussed.
Traditionally, the reason that had been moved is people taking kids to college or whatever, they would, they would, we would struggle to get a quorum some years, but yeah, I'll be here, but I don't know about any of the rest of you.
Okay. First day of school is for teachers is August 13th, which is why that August 5th meeting is important if we've got people we need to hire and approve. And the first day for students is August 18th. So it is kind of right in the middle of that, yeah.
I really appreciate the November dates this year because going to Chicago for the conference and then having to come back and have to go back in two days works out really well this year. So it'd be nice to continue that, but we can't because of Thanksgiving all the time.
Yeah, we can't control when Thanksgiving falls, but it is perfect this year, yes.
And I probably won't be here in September, so.
Alright, I guess.
Other major conflicts that people have or see or? Okay. Hopefully, we'll have a seventh board member by then. So it won't be as critical.
We will.
I know, I'm just, I'm kidding.
Well, one will be chosen for us if we don't get it done.
Yes.
Alright, so I mean, as far as the dates are concerned, anyone else want to make a comment? Okay, so we can pivot now to the time. It's six o'clock has worked, I think, well the past couple of years, but if people want to discuss, you know, a different start time, it's now would be the point to do that. It works, it works especially well for staff. So they don't have to hang out for an extra half hour, hour before a meeting starts.
Yeah, it's been nice.
And we can get out of here maybe a little earlier instead of having midnight meetings, so. Alright, yeah, I think we've got a tentative meeting scheduled that we have to vote on next time, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Our last administrative report of the evening is the tentative budget.
Okay.
Turn it over to Mary Ann is going to lead this.
Thank you. Okay, so good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting to you a very tentative budget for fiscal year 26. The tentative budget is brought to you every year in June, so we have a budget in place to operate our new fiscal year, which starts July 1. And then the final budget, which will be a lot more data-driven and have a lot more hard facts, is going to be brought to you in September. You will see in front of you as I'm going through, just kind of reviewing things, you'll have your summary of the tentative budget changes for the Ed Fund, your tentative budget assumptions and notes, and the budget summary. And as you can see, I'm presenting a slight deficit budget based on the current information that we have. There's a lot of unknowns right now. I'm sure you've been seeing some of the things in the news. And so with all the unknowns in the revenue, I've been very conservative with our revenues and have, it's very tentative. The focus right now is all on the Ed Fund. And so you'll see all of the other funds will reflect no changes until the final budget. As I was budgeting the revenue, again, I was very conservative. You'll see that I only put in 600,000 increase for property taxes. And I think last year at this time, when Carol was presenting the tentative budget, they didn't budget any of, any revenue for real estate taxes at this time, just because our property tax revenue isn't received in two portions of two tax levy cycles. And so I'll have a more definitive number for you at the final. We received documentation that we're resolving the refund liability with President's Hospital. And you're actually going to be voting on that tonight. This is a one-time payment that has been set aside in our fund balances and it should be resolved and due to the final documentation that we just received today, it has to be resolved by June 25th or within 10 days of you guys voting tonight. So this will be reflected in the final budget and it's going to mainly impact the district's cash flow and our fund balances because it's been kind of set aside as a reserve. You will also notice that TIF 4 is expiring on December 31st of 2025. After conversations with the city, we've missed our deadline to file for an extension on that TIF. Should the city decide that it wants to apply for an extension, it'll be during the fall veto session. And as of right now, this will not impact our FY '26 budget, but we will want to balloon levy to be able to capture all that possible EAB property. And it's anticipated that this will be the last year that we'll receive that 50,000 for the technology from TIF 4, with it expiring in December, but we will be able to offset it with the increase of tax revenue from that TIF. I was also very conservative with 350,000 for the state evidence-based funding. The state approved the FY '26 budget, which included an increase in evidence-based funding, which is excellent for us. If the district remains tier one, we should see a significant increase in that revenue. And so I'll adjust it for the final budget meeting. And in the state budget, it, there was discussion about some lowering of the evidence-based funding model, but that was really just for the property tax relief grant. They were putting that on pause for FY '26. And that doesn't impact us because we've applied for it every year, but we don't get it. So all of the other mandated categoricals for the state's budget remained flat. And it will be reviewed in the final budget. The district's also receiving revenue in FY '26 from some energy incentives and credits. The solar project at Thomas Paint has been completed and the anticipated revenue is reflected in your summary sheet. It is anticipated that the three projects that we are completing or that we're implementing, which there was two at the sixth grade center with geo, one was geothermal and solar. And we had solar and then geothermal that we've, but the geothermal at Thomas Paint's already been completed. So we're anticipating that the three remaining solar and geothermal projects will be completed and we should be able to receive that revenue in FY '26. We're waiting, I think we're in conversation with Ameren about kind of giving us that stamp of approval by June 30th. So we're really hoping that we can get that in time and then. So we're really hoping that we can get that in time and then working with I G W to ensure that the geothermal is ready to go for the, um, uh, geothermal at the sixth grade center as well. And these are just a one-time revenue allocation, but it should help us with our, um, supports with our, I'm losing my train of thought, I can't think of the word, it's our energy, like, or utilities, thank you, oh my God, sorry about that. Yeah, so it will, um, still help us with our utilities, thank you, John. As for, um, the expenditures, these reflect a snapshot in a moment of time. It includes salary increases from the collective bargaining agreement and board approval. I'm kind of going through the, um, budget assumptions. This is our first year with the sixth grade center, so there's a lot of unknowns and without any historical background. So administration has made the best estimate of additional costs, which has been discussed at previous board meetings. And we'll continue to make adjustments once we occupy the facility and have more data available. And I've also been in communication with the Park District as well about the district's portion of the indoor aquatic, um, center's estimated loss. It is currently estimated to be about two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six sixty-five, which is what we allocated last year at this time. Um, we are entering our second year of a three-year agreement. And I've been looking into the history of the pool and we'll be having further discussions with the Park District. And then this very tentative budget will be coming to your approval on June seventeenth. I know that there's a lot of information there, so the way that I kind of did it was I took the, um, increases in the revenues, which we kind of discussed about, you'll see on your sum, uh, summary page, and then those are reflected into your tentative budget summary. But again, the majority, all the focus was on, um, Fund Ten, which is our ed fund. And then everything else was kind of carried over from last fiscal, or F Y twenty-five for the revenues and expenditures.
A lot of information for folks, um, any, any questions for Mary Ann? This is pretty, I mean, I've done this, I guess, thirteenth, my thirteenth time with this now. This is pretty typical, um, going in from year to year that whereas, we, we tend to be very conservative, both in our revenue and our, uh, expense estimates, so coming out with a one percent deficit in the tentative budget is not out of the, out of whack. You know, we'd be more concerned in the fall when we get the real numbers in and things kind of look like we're, you know, we're deficit spending. At that point, we'd have to make a judgment as to what we would do for the following fiscal year with regards to structural deficits. But, um, this is, from, from my eyes, this is fairly typical from what we get in, in June.
And if you do have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me and we can have like a one-on-one conversation or I can even walk you through it, we can schedule something.
Yeah, exactly, uh, just be prepared to vote on this in two weeks. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and expect it to change too, it will be very different in the fall. So this is just a tentative and it's still, we can continue with the next fiscal year. And so, um, we, I'm kind of looking at Lindsay too, so it, we have to approve a tentative budget so we can start with the next fiscal year.
Right, yeah, it's, it's part of our board policy as well. I mean, some, some districts do it differently than we do, but, uh, it's, it's part of our board policy to do this before July first. All right, moving on to action items. Um, it says consent here, but I don't think we should do them in consent. They should be individual action items, so let's, let's take them one at a time. Uh, first up is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property in accordance with state law. Uh, this is, uh, student desks, student chairs, teacher desks, tables, office chairs, homemade shelves, miscellaneous plastic storage products and library books from Leo. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for disposal of personal property?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, any questions, comments, discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marbu?
Yes.
Uh, Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes, Vice President Vaxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes, uh, motion passes. Uh, next action item is a settlement agreement with Presence Hospital, county officials and taxing districts. So this is the longstanding, um, uh, disagreement with, uh, regards to, um, monies that were held in an old TIF for years that, uh, were subject to a pending question from, uh, from Presence Hospital at the time. Um, uh, agreement has been reached with, uh, with Presence and all the taxing bodies, not just their band of school district, with regards to returning the, the money, uh, that was held but not spent. So when the TIF closed years ago, the school district received those funds that we've been held, holding them in escrow, um, pending, uh, settlement of, of, uh, disagreement, so, um, we're basically returning all the money back to Presence. That's, 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 that's the, the short, um, summary of it. Well, back when we had the, the initial settlement with Carl, uh, it was a much, much, much different situation. The, the court hadn't, hadn't really adjudicated the matter, so the school district was able to get a much more favorable, uh, split of those proceeds. Um, but now that, um, things are different now, so. So it's, it's all going back to Presence and, uh, we're just glad that this kind of twenty-plus year saga is, is going to be, um, behind us. So I guess, uh, before, I guess we have a group discussion on it, I, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Presence Hospital.
I move to approve the settlement agreement with Presence Hospital, county officials and taxing districts resolving pending property tax exemption litigation subject to final review and revision by council.
Thank you, uh, is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded, any, any further questions, comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
I was just going to say that I'm just glad that, that we can close the door on this and start planning for the future. I think it's really been, prevented us a lot from different things that we want to do and seeing the future in a different way, so. Okay, um, Member Marbu?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes, Vice President Vaxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, also accompanying this agreement is basically an intergovernmental agreement for all the other taxing bodies that are party to this settlement agreement. So we've got, got verbiage to basically, uh, describe, uh, what the taxing bodies are doing in concert with one another. Um, is there a motion to approve the, the accompanying intergovernmental agreement?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with county officials and taxing districts regarding Presence Hospital property tax exemption litigation subject to final review and revision by council.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Moved and seconded, any further questions, comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry.
Could you just give some more information about what that means regarding subject to final review? In the motion?
Oh, so you have an email, um, that I sent you about an hour before our meeting because the attorney sent it to us around almost four o'clock. Um, it, so as of where we are right now, the agreement that you have in front of you is, um, basically where we are. But, um, it sounded like, right, Mary Ann, there's one more meeting possibly and all the other taxing bodies also have to a, agree and have this, and do the same, um, intergovernmental agreement. So if there are any tweaks, um, as of right now, we have our final allocation, we have the dates that we're supposed to, um,
Make the payments.
Make the payment. And, um, so if any of that were to change based on Presence's request or based on some other negotiation that may not have happened yet, um, we'd want to be able to not bring this back again, um, because it has to be taken care of by June twenty-fifth. So, um, if there are any little minor tweaks that the attorneys have to make, um, we, we only have one more meeting this month. So we'd be outside of the scope of being able to bring it back to you guys anyway, um, so.
But we're already guaranteed that the district, the amount of money that the district is paying won't change.
Yep.
That, that's been locked, that's been locked down.
Absolutely.
Okay, Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes, Vice President Vaxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marbu?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, there is a call for a special meeting in two days for, uh, for board training purposes. It's going to be held at the, at middle school, uh, room fifteen-twenty.
And this is our module three requirement that we have to meet, um, for the state for having an intensive school designation, so.
Thank you for the extra clarification.
Yes.
Um, superintendent's report.
Okay.
Oh.
Yes, there will be, yes, um, yeah, we will have, we will have.
Are we being fed, basically?
Yes, yes, yes. Lori will reach out to you about your food choice. Um, I just wanted to highlight, there was a really nice article, um, or news story from W A N D about our summer meal program. Uh, but I also just wanted to highlight it for our families that might be watching or staff members communicating with families, um, to make sure that people know when they can come and get, um, free summer meals. Um, you don't do anything, you just show up to one of our school sites at the times listed here, um, on this flyer, please share it. Um, people who can eat, we can't feed adults, we only feed children eighteen and under. Um, you don't be, have to be enrolled in one of the programs that are happening. And, um, so it is, it is a great opportunity for families who may be concerned about food security, food insecurity. Um, we also have a lot of, um, kind of programs that, uh, like in-home daycares and people who are, um, watching kids in the summer who, um, tend to bring their students out to take advantage of the free summer meals. And so, um, it's something we've done for many years and I just want to make sure we highlight as much as we can. And we only have this meeting and one more meeting to do that. And next is, um, I also wanted to just, uh, shout out for board members, I'd encourage you to visit. I know summer maybe is a little more, um, relaxed in terms of maybe your work schedules, um, if you want to pop in and, um, just see any of the programming that is going on. So the big one at King is see you around town. Um, last count, we had almost a hundred and eighty students signed up for that, um, program, which is the largest we've had in a really long time. So we're very excited about that. Um, it is, uh, for first through fourth graders. Um, and then Camp Invention is a, um, one-week, uh, camp that we've, uh, hosted for several years. This year it'll be at Yankee Ridge. Um, it's been at King, it's been at Leo. Um, and then U M S has a couple of different programs happening that are open, that were open to anyone who wanted to participate. Um, but this list is not exhaustive, you know, we also have other programs that are invite-only like, um, the special education extended school year programming. Um, we have some middle school transition programming, um, and basically summer school, um, that happens at the high school that our, um, our, uh, high schoolers sign up if they need to repeat a class, maybe that they didn't do very well in during the year. Um, some of our high school students work ahead, um, and earn credits in the summer. So, um, those are not listed here, but, um, summer school at the high school starts next week and goes into that, um, the week of July thirteenth. Um, and then again, we have no programs on June nineteenth, on, um, uh, June nineteenth. Um, and that is a day off because of the federal holiday. And last but not least, uh, Randy, um, as requested, uh, we're going to try to bring you a sixth grade center update, um, as much as we can. So here, I'm going to turn this over to Randy so he can talk about some sixth grade center construction updates.
Okay, just a quick update, um, brickwork is finishing, um, uh, finishing brick, brickwork is ongoing. Um, painting continues in the new addition, the old section is complete, except for some minor touch-ups. Most of the windows are installed, um, the storm shelter windows, uh, have been delivered or scheduled for installation this week. Kitchen equipment is scheduled for installation on June seventeenth. Uh, the epoxy flooring is complete throughout the building except in the locker rooms and I believe that's supposed to be, um, starting this week or maybe even finishing this week. Um, I didn't go in there today, uh, to see where they're at, but, uh, um, it should be getting close to casework, um, which is like the cabinets and stuff like that is, uh, complete. I think we're waiting on like one piece to come in, but, um, it should be in here shortly. Uh, flooring, V C T is installed in classrooms, uh, in the hallways on the north end. Uh, we're just waiting to get them cleaned and waxed. Uh, cork boards and marker boards, installation is nearly complete. It would have been complete if we hadn't, uh, if I hadn't added about, I don't know, ten or twelve more. Uh, geothermal system, uh, the, uh, boring is complete, horizontal line installation, uh, will begin next week and expect to take approximately three weeks to get the system hooked up, um, flushed out and, uh, make sure that there's no leaks and stuff, um, have it tested. Uh, heat pumps, uh, were delivered and placed in the rooms. Um, there's waiting installation, but I think we may try to wax before we install those, but they can go ahead and, uh, make sure all the plumbing is there, just like and put them in place and hook them up. Um, we're hoping to have the new electrical service, um, maybe by the end of this week. And, uh, any of the doors that we had to, um, purchase are currently being hung in the building. Oh, and the library shelving, um, is in, it's in our warehouse, just waiting to be, uh, waiting for the library to be ready to, uh, accept them.
That's a lot. Uh, board reports, uh, we do have one matter that we need to discuss as a board, and that is we did receive, uh, three, uh, people who were interested in filling the board seat. So I, we needed now to kind of discuss a process by which, um, we select, um, a candidate. What typically happens when we've got multiple applicants is the League of Voters comes in and questions are asked, you know, in, in public session. The board interviews the candidates in private section and deliberates in private and then comes out with, with their selection for, um, who's going to take the seat.
So can I be clear, we have three people that are interested, but we don't have their applications as of yet. So they all have applications as of Friday.
These are, yeah, these are people who've indicated interest.
Yes.
Is there a deadline for completing the applications?
So, um, they were told that they'd be, they have questions. So, um, I think the request was that a board member reach out to them, um, and just answer their questions. And, um, I think they want to, want to know a little bit about the process as well, basically what we're talking about right now.
I mean, so we've got, we had forty-five days, uh, since the first meeting in May to do this before the regional superintendent, um, is powered to select for us. So that would be June fourteenth, fifteenth-ish.
I think he'd be, um, because we didn't have any applicants or even interest until Friday, so. But yes, so when I talked to him, he basically said, I can't appoint anyone if you don't have anyone interested. And so now that we have three candidates that are interested, um, I think just if somebody, I don't know, Sherri, it sounds like you're nodding, are you willing to call? Okay. And these are all King, um, parents.
So, um, if we do have multiple candidates, so I think we need to pencil in a date by which we could do the interview. If there's only one, the league, the league wouldn't participate and it's kind of pointless really for us to, to hold a interview for one person. So, um.
We have a meeting on the seventeenth.
Yeah, what, what's the agenda looking like for the seventeenth?
So we'll have the remainder of the, um, school improvement presentations that we haven't seen yet. And, um, we'll have a couple of, uh, action items, um, and that is about it. The, but that's what I mean.
We got to vote on the budget, right?
We'll have a couple of action items to approve and, I mean, that is it, just our end of the year. We've done all of our grants, um, reports.
Yeah, we outside, so but, so the regionals, the regional superintendent would have the ability to do it, but they, I think if we talked to him, he'd, he'd allow us to.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So.
When I talked to him, he was giving us a lot of leeway and grace because we, we haven't had anyone to even appoint, so, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm confident that he would rather us do it than, than he do it. So I, I, I think that if we had two or three candidates who wish to go through the whole process, that wouldn't take us more than an hour or, or at most ninety minutes. So adding that to what it sounds like, if, you know, fairly light agenda wouldn't be a burden to some, I don't think, to do it just two weeks from today if they're interested.
Following the meeting, is that what you're saying?
I think. Uh, we could do it following, or we could do it up front, um, probably easier on, on admin if we did it up front, I was sorry, that, at the end.
At the end, yeah, because we will have another whole group of people come to do presentations, it's kind of what we had tonight.
So that would probably be starting at approximately seven thirty, seven, seven thirty. The, 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 depending on the length of the uh group of plans, which can take a while.
Are we going to reach out to the league to ask them to come?
That should, that's, that's the harder thing, is saying, well, it'll start kind of around this time, um. So uh, I could do that part of it, I, I'll just coordinate with you, Sherri, with regards to um if we have multiple candidates or not. And then I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can, we can get like, I'll tell them, you know, seven thirty on, in two weeks from today. I'm not sure who's doing it now.
Oh, it's not Tricia anymore, it's Cory, okay. Oh, that's one, okay.
Is, is Central Office closed now on Fridays, is that?
Um, not until next Friday is the first Friday.
So would it be reasonable to have, if they're going to uh submit an application that they would have it in by next Thursday, and that way we know?
June twelfth, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I think we should give a date, you know, you gotta have it in.
And if it is, right, if there's anybody else in the public who wishes to, to uh apply by, by June twelfth, um, they would also have that ability, but not just these three people.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we've got a agreement, alright, uh, any other board reports this evening?
The other thing I wanted to bring up regarding calendar is that we had talked about different times when board members would meet with the public, so that with, outside of this room, and I'm hoping to have something more in place when we begin in um the fall, so that there's specific dates, so the community knows that on the second and, or the fourth what particular day that one of us would be available, or two of us would be available to have just a private chat.
Anyone else? If, if uh we are done with reports, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're adjourned for this evening, uh, see you folks in.